To order to get us rolling, I will remind us of our vision and mission that supports all of our wonderful students and staff and community. So that vision is that we believe in opportunities, achievement and community for all. And to support that, we all state that the school district of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. With that, we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 11. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. How about our agenda, Mr. Goman?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Rick's motion seconded by Dave to approve the agenda. Does anyone have questions on it? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that clearly passes. The minutes are in board docs as usual from our previous meeting.
I will approve the minutes from the regular meeting held February 26, 2024. It's presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Dave's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve the meeting minutes from our previous meeting. Questions from anyone on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also clearly passes. Vouchers are similarly attached.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $716,518.45 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. John's motion is seconded by Ed to approve our general checking vouchers in the amount that he enumerated. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That also clearly passes. Thank you, and we are into our regular meeting topics. Public comment had no one sign up, so we will roll down to superintendent update, which at this point in the month are Red Hawk highlights.
Thank you, Joe. We have a number of celebrations for our students and staff that I want to highlight. March is National Youth Art Month, and I'd like to spotlight accomplishments from some very talented Red Hawk artists. Our Milton High School Art Honors Society students competed at UW Whitewater Visual Arts Classic a couple of weeks ago, and of all the schools there, they finished third overall. Nine different students took first place in individual categories and 10 other students placed second in individual categories. And there were three students that each earned a first piece, excuse me, first place for both of their pieces. Emily Yates, Wavili, and Griffin Danks all finished first with multiple pieces of art, and Griffin got a perfect score in painting. And those three, because they had multiple first places, advanced to the state competition on March 25, which will be in Madison. And special thanks to Ms. Flynn for her guidance and support of our art students at the high school. The district student art show is happening right now at the Milton Public Library. I encourage everyone to stop by and check that out. Our art educators across all of our schools have picked some of their students' finest pieces to go on display for the community. So that's at the Milton Public Library. At Northside, our students, led by our student council, took part in the Do Good Wisconsin Cereal Box Domino Challenge. They collected over 1,500 cereal boxes and donated those to the Milton Food Pantry. So it was quite a sight to see all of those cereal boxes, not only collected, but then lined up on March 7, which was National Cereal Day, and they celebrated by lining all of the cereal boxes up and doing a domino chain, knocking the first one over, and then the 1,566 cereal boxes getting knocked over, and that was on social media and got a lot of attention on social media. Another celebration at Milton High School, Ms. Avery's Computers for the Workplace class. Seventy students have earned their Microsoft Office Associate certificates in three different office programs. Those are recognized industry-wide, demonstrate a very professional level of skill and efficiency. And in a first for Ms. Avery since she's been at Milton High School, two individuals scored 1,000 out of 1,000, so perfect scores on their certification test. Hannah Chady on PowerPoint 2019 Associate and Reed Waschkowiac on PowerPoint 2019 Associate and Excel Associate. So congratulations to our Computers in the Workplace students and teachers. Milton High School freshman Brooklyn Wagner is part of the high school Youth Entrepreneurs Club, and she presented her ideas for a potential product through the Wisconsin business world in collaboration with QuickTrip, and there were three winners across the state, and Brooklyn Wagner was one of three winners in that competition. So it's been a good last few weeks for Milton High School students. Some of our sixth through eighth grade Red Hawks competed in Southern Lakes Advanced Learners Network Academic Bowl in Watertown last week. Many of them walked away with ribbons of achievement. And then our winter sports have wrapped up. Three Red Hawk wrestlers, Aiden Sinclair, Matty Peach, and Tyson Peach, were state champions in wrestling in their respective weight classes. The boys' basketball team made it to the regional semifinals. Aiden Gaul from the boys' basketball team was named Conference Player of the Year, the Badger Conference Large, and Coach Ian Kirst was named the Badger Large Conference Basketball Coach of the Year. So congratulations to the boys' basketball team. And our girls' basketball team had an outstanding season, broke several team and individual records. So congratulations to all of our winter athletes, and we're transitioning now to our spring sports. And we also are celebrating our Red Hawk alumni. We want to thank Elliott Anderson, who's a 2009 graduate of Milton High School. Elliott came back to Milton East, where he went to elementary school, and shared his experiences competing in the world famous Iditarod Sludog Race and brought one of his dogs with. So it was an exciting learning experience for our Milton East students and a great way to showcase an excellent achievement by one of our alumni.
Very good. Any questions for Rich? Certainly lots to celebrate, so thank you for that, Rich. Great update. All right, as we roll down, next is a presentation from our Tina Norton, Sheila Wilcox, Kim West, Kelly Minogue, and Brand Miles. If I got everyone included, I hope I did.
You did.
This is going to be District Library Plan and Goals Update.
And this is our LMTS, that means Library Media Technology Specialist. So these are amazing library media technology specialists who serve our salaries on databases. So they are going to give you an update around the goals and the library plan. Good evening. So yearly going forward, we'll be coming in front of the board, talking about our library plan and our journey yearly, where we're at and where we plan to go. So it looks a little differently as we follow the Future Ready Library Framework, and that's up on display in front of you today. So we're just going to spend a few minutes talking about it, and then if you have any questions, so appreciate that. Any questions you may have. So again, we are following the guidelines of DPI, and we also use the Future Ready Library Framework with all those gears around it, and the center, the yellow center, is always the student at the center of everything that we do. And then again, there is the district vision and mission, but we also have established a vision and mission within our libraries as well. So just something for you to look at. And then we have these three models, the Future Ready Library Framework, the Future Red Hawk, and the Wisconsin Digital Learning Plan as well, and how all three of these things are integrated into our library plan for the district. Our first goal is about developing a universal K-12 footprint sequence, and we're using the Wisconsin Digital Learning Plan in year one, which is all about equity, and we're trying to right-mass streamline all our resources so every school, every student will have access to the same materials. It may be databases, but it also will be technology as well, so we're looking at streamlining it so every child has access to those resources. We also went and presented at ISTI our Digital Wellness Plan, K-12, last year. Again, we are adding new databases this year, so we have PELCO and at the high school, the New York Times, we are adding, also exploring right now, and we'll be purchasing a bilingual database for Spanish, so the books will be in Spanish, or bilingual for kids to access K-8 in the district, and another database we're exploring as well. Plus, we're also purchasing and have purchased ARVR equipment, and we'll be leading the way with that within the district as well. Our second goal is, again, it's just talking about equity. I wanted you to understand what that meant, and it's making sure we have a capable access to all materials within the district. So that is just streamlining our resources. We created an online library of databases and resources and sent it out to the district and the minister. Please go seek out your LMTSs if you have any questions. We'll be doing that same thing with all the technology we have and how we as libraries can support that or our Microsoft System materials as well. And then our second goal is building instructional partnerships. So this looks differently than the old school library. We wear many hats, and we might be collaborating, we might be directly team teaching with a classroom teacher, we might be creating collections within our Destiny library system, or we might be creating choice boards. It looks very differently in all the different schools, but we support teachers in various ways. And our goal three is we want to help deliver district-level PD with technology. A lot of it, a lot of the teachers have said they like the just-in-time PD, that when they need something, they will come to us and we will provide them with the support that they need. We are also participating in post-study at tech coaching premier, so we're reading about how we can help support teachers, and the next year we'll work on implementing it. Again, we presented at ISTI on the Future Ready Library, what it looks like in our district, and we also went to Slate and we learned about AI and digital, you know, talked about digital citizenship and technology as well. We are also working on collaboration with the tech department on pretty much tech sites that we'll be sharing. It's just in the early stages right now. But what, again, I said, is a lot of the teachers like the just-in-time PD. We also have presented all of us to our staff, the whole staff, within the district on technology as well. And then we added an addendum to our library plan that's just about making sure that we protect students and their records within our Destiny library system. We did not have it in there, so sometimes we might come up and say we're just adding something to it and letting you be aware. We are only dealing with individuals that will have access to those records, are the library media tech specialists, the library media assistants, parents, administrators, those are, and students, teachers, those are the only individuals to keep student privacy And then we also have two long-range plans, which we're really trying to go. One is to create library spaces that are accessible, flexible, and profitable for all students and staff, and then creating that cohesive K-12 library plan. DPI is adding changes to the Wisconsin Information Technology Literacy Standards, so we'll need to, even though our goal is to complete it this year, we're going to have to go back into it next year and make changes because we also tie into those standards as well. And then we thought we should see a little bit inside each of the libraries, so we just added slides just to see what is going on in the libraries. It's no longer quiet spaces and kids are just reading. Yes, we welcome reading, absolutely, but we also provide these resources. And I should mention too, within the framework, we also, all of us collaborated with the public library, that is something that we need to do as future-ready librarians, and if they look differently at the K-3, they're coming in at the end of the year and talking about the summer reading program. I know there are some opportunities at Northside where the libraries at the public library are coming in and doing book studies and other things at the middle school level. We're doing collaboration with bringing the kids into the library at the middle school and also the public library as well, and reading and getting a little incentive. And also at the high school level, there are some book clubs that are going on as well that she is supporting. So actually, the public library and the public school libraries, we both have a common goal of where we need to collaborate with each other, so I really wanted to stress that. Are there any questions? Comments?
Talk a little bit about the Mitchell Leto, with sharing data, like in the elementary world, is it literally driving books back and forth to different libraries based on what kids' needs are, or is it more of it being databases and the things that are available to the kids? Or how does it work if there's four separate elementary buildings?
We do share, actually, all of us share our resources, all of our e-books with the P, or all our publications in with each other. And then also, we are part of WISCAP, where we share out our resources to other public, both public libraries and also private schools. And then we also have access to their materials as well. So we do that behind the scenes. My assistant and also Kelly's assistant are the ones that are in charge of that and taking the lead on that so that we can share our resources throughout the schools and also the public libraries. And then databases, yeah, we try to make sure that everyone has access to the same databases. We do talk a lot together. We have professional development together, and we try to bounce off ideas off each other.
Tina, could you just introduce your team and what school they represent?
That's fantastic. I'm Bre Miles, I'm at a high school.
Tina Norton, I'm at West End Little School.
Kelly Minogue, I'm at Harmony and Consolidated.
Kim West, I'm at Northside.
And Sheila Wilcox, I'm at Milton East and Little School.
Thank you.
Tina, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Awesome. Great, I think you're doing some good work. Could you, for whom we may not know, maybe elaborate on what ISTI is and what an honor it is to get chosen to present here? It's not an easy task. The fact that you presented twice, I think?
We presented twice last year, and the year before we presented too. The year before was even harder because of COVID, which I did not know they were holding on 50 presentation with poster sessions. So it's the International Society of Technology Education, and I, we all love going to it. We're learning about new technology. There's time for you to collaborate with other people that are like-minded like you or in your profession, and you need to bounce ideas off of each other, even though you're in different states. It's local, too. Yes, it is local. It's for national teachers.
And just to drive it home, for the rest of the board, it is a really big honor to be chosen. There's roughly 20,000 people attending the conference on a given year, and thousands and thousands of entries to present, so the fact that they were chosen is a huge honor for the school to contribute. Kudos to you guys.
We had both sessions. We just put in two just to see if I'm in good, maybe the second one we open them or something else.
Kudos.
Excellent. Great speeches.
We are fortunate as a school district to have such a strong, thriving public library to work together with our district, but we're also really fortunate to have such great educators in each of our schools. Our group does an outstanding job. They work really hard. They're very out front in student learning. They're not waiting to see what trends are, but they're setting trends, and it's great to see all the examples and pictures from each school. It really is a case where students are learning in our library media centers every day, and not just by reading, but by taking part in fun educational activities.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I learned a new acronym tonight, LMTS, right?
Thanks.
Very good, and thanks again. All right, roll down the agenda. Our HR committee is one of our busier committees, and they're even hitting the busy season, but we had a meeting a week ago or so, and Rick is going to update us on that.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. The HR committee met last week on March 6. First item on the agenda is health insurance benefits and future options update. This conversation is a continuation of our January 25, 2023 HR committee meeting. The board approved HR committee and administration's recommendation to increase teachers, administrators, and supervisors from 12.6% to 15%, and the support staff from 6% to 10%. This change was coupled with the introduction of wellness and primary care annual visits with a $200 single health wellness incentive and a $400 family health wellness incentive. Those were effective for this current year. Also during that discussion, administration shared with HR committee that comparable data showed that support staff pay for health insurance is similar to what teachers and administrators pay for health insurance. Historically, support staff's premium deductions for health insurance stood at 6%, reflecting a benefit misalignment with surrounding districts. However, recent years have seen support staff, certain support staff groups receive larger percentage increases to align their benefits and wages more closely with those of the surrounding districts and the Badger Conference. And currently, if you could just bring up the presentation that's in board docs, please, I just want to go over, hit a few points on here. If we go to the next page, on this page, you'll see what the premium is for each level, whether it be single, family, HRA, or HSA, and what the district and the employee paid. You'll also see on the bottom there the projected increase for this coming year with the 9.9% will be a $430,000 increase in the premium. And currently, if you go onto the next page, please. One thing to highlight on here is our current medical loss ratio is at 108.3%. Just a reminder, what this states is that for every dollar that Dean takes in for premiums, they're paying out $1.08 in claims. So we would like to get that down. And on the next page, these are some examples of some of the so-called levers that can be manipulated to manage health insurance costs, things such as wellness, plan design, contribution, or eligibility. And on the next pages, we will see some graphs comparing how the, these show what a out-of-pocket max would be for either a single or a family in the HSA or the HRA plan. This first one compares Milton versus, this is for the professional staff comparing us to other Rock County districts. Next one compares the professional staff with the Badger Conference, and then you'll see the same thing with the support staff with the Rock County and the support staff, I'm sorry. There's the professional staff in Rock County, and then the support staff also with the Badger Conference. So I'll let you take a look at those if you would like. The next steps for the committee will be to bring this topic back to the HR committee meeting on March 20 to continue this conversation. In addition, this conversation will be shared with the benefits advisory group at our upcoming meeting on this Wednesday. This will lead into our update to the 2024-25 teen health insurance renewal rates. On February 22, Rich, Ross, and Chris held discussions with USI regarding the renewal. USI indicated that without staff wellness visits reaching 70%, renewal would incur a 13.9% increase, whereas with 70% or more participation in wellness visits, the increase would be reduced to 9.9%. I'm pleased to announce that as of February 29, Dean has confirmed our staff wellness visits have reached 71%, encompassing both primary physician visits and visits to the school employee wellness. The next phase involves administration engaging in discussions with Dean and USI to outline the structure of the wellness incentive for the next few years, including considerations such as premium differentials, family plan options, and the possibility of extending wellness visit requirements to a second family member. This will be an important part of the continuation of the process moving forward with improving population health goals. Chris or Rich, did anything to add to that topic?
I don't know.
Any questions or comments?
Just one thing, one thing that I want to make sure, I think people maybe saw it in the slideshow, but one of the slides showed that benefits for our employee groups, and this includes all benefits, not just medical insurance. Medical insurance is the largest part. Benefits altogether make up a little bit over 22% of our annual expenses. It's over $11 million that are spent, and it's important for us to have not only competitive salaries, but competitive benefits. And each year, we look at Badger Conference and surrounding school districts to see where people are in salaries for our different employee groups and also in benefits for our different employee groups. So the data that's shared here in those four slides is we chose the max out-of-pocket because premiums and deductibles can be very dependent on what the plans look like. So by looking at the maximum cost that employees would need to spend, we feel that's a good apples-to-apples comparison from our district to other districts.
For the maximum out-of-pockets, just slide seven and eight, so for like, for example, the HSA, does that net out the district's contributions to the HSA plan? Because the maximum pockets on there are less than deductible, am I just trying to reconcile what it means?
So that is true, that it would not, the props really quickly does not include the HRA, but it does include the HSA.
Correct.
So the HRA is not guaranteed, but that because it's based off of the individual's claims that they submit.
Okay.
So that's not part of the makeup, but the HSA payments to the employee are included in those goals.
Got it. That makes sense, then. Thank you.
Dave's question does highlight that there are some districts in the comparison that only have one plan available, and there are other districts that have multiple plans. So if a district had multiple plans, we listed both of those plans there. And you can see from the data that the HSA typically is a lower overall cost for our employees. But again, as Chris shared, it depends if they're in the HRA, it depends on how many or what level of claims they have.
Does it break it down on slide three, the medical loss ratio? Does it break down how much of that over 100 is based on the HRA plan versus the HSA plan and their actual results?
It does not. So those are both the plans together.
Okay.
At the 108.3 for the medical loss ratio, as well as the 9.9% for our renewal rate. That's both plans combined, all of our staff combined, including our retirees under the HRA.
Okay. Because I would assume that's heavily weighted on the HRA, because any cost paid with HRA contributions from the district wouldn't be trended in that number, right? So.
The logic there, yes.
It's probably heavily weighted on the HRA plan being not at 87 or 88 and instead being close to 110.
So I would say, yes, your logic is sound, but I would, like, I don't want to go up and say it's how I would have handled it.
Yes, you'll understand. Okay. Thank you.
Does the insurance company give you a percentage, like 80, 20, like the majority of that expense comes from 20% of the population versus, so that you would maybe know where to target? I mean, I know in organizations I've been in before, they'll come, and they won't give names, but they'll say like, okay, here's your top seven, all cause, whatever they are, and it's actually like, depending on your workforce, 10%.
We do see those numbers. We usually receive that information in August, September, right before the school year begins, and that's based off of a prior year. So Dean provides that information to USI. USI provides a lengthy explanation to Rich and Ross and myself, and we talk through where we're going to be presenting those goals about wellness, where are we going to be targeting. So that's all very prescribed process, and then we bring it up to the HR committee and say, this is what we're thinking for the upcoming year is our goals, and then sharing that information with the benefits advisor here.
Yeah, Chris is spot on that a large part of our drive towards employee wellness stems from what you just asked about, Tracy, that oftentimes very large cost items can accrue in medical care, as we all know, and we want to make sure that, we've really stressed with our staff that when we talk about wellness, it isn't around, and we talk about bringing that medical loss ratio down, it's not about not going to the doctor, it's about being proactive and getting your wellness checks, catching things before they get as serious if possible, but also understanding that that's not always the case. that that's not always the case.
And I did want to give a shout out and a thank you to all the staff, you know, not for the wellness, not so that we could get to the 9.9%, but because they care about their health and they want to take care of themselves and their families. So thanks to the staff tonight. What I said, they can continue to, you know, have those wellness checks done and so thanks to them. Did anyone have any other questions on that topic?
Yep, just one last question. On slide four, we talked about some of the different options for trying to get that the loss ratio, kind of more of my traditional numbers. Do they provide, and again, it's all based on what claims and what happens in the future. I get that, but you know, some of these bullet points, what traditionally, you know, what's, what's the net-net of some of these if they were implemented traditionally as far as some savings? So for example, the, the second family member wellness screening, that, you know, are there generally numbers that can throw at those to say, if you did this, this is the kind of savings you traditionally would see, or are they not able to go that far?
On that particular topic, we're not able to go that far yet because school districts really haven't explored this option. Other districts like Soton and Key are very, are in the same situation that we are. They're maybe in year two, or it's more in year one, but they're starting to look at that, to be expanded into including two or more members of a family plan to be able to get that incentive. Other districts do a premium differential versus a dollar amount. So those are all the conversations that we have with USI and Dean to talk about what is a good solution for them.
Excellent.
Any other questions on that? Okay, next topic was flexible benefits, HRA and HSA and Cobra vendor update. The district is in discussions regarding the termination of its agreement with diversified benefit services for the 2024-25 year. Administration has been evaluating vendor quotes from USI. Respective vendors are expected to offer a flex medical debit card and maintain the existing services at a more cost-effective rate. Additionally, the transition is anticipated to bring about an enhancement in customer service compared to our current vendor. This information will be shared with the benefits advisory group on Wednesday regarding the upcoming change and new benefit structure of flex medical, as well as obtaining feedback about staff's interest in the flex medical and flex dependent benefits. So more to come on that. Any questions on that topic? All right, next up is discussion and possible action on a 1.0 FTE educational interpreter at the middle school. Human Resources Committee is recommending that the Board of Education approve hiring a 1.0 FTE educational interpreter at the middle school beginning, once approved and the position is filled. This recommendation is to meet the identified needs of a student who is hard of hearing by providing an interpreter in all of their classes. If approved, HR department will post for this position and begin the search process. I'm going to make a motion to approve the addition of a 1.0 FTE education interpreter at the Milton Middle School as presented.
Okay.
Okay. I'm all for this guy, just ask a question, just so I better understand.
You can, just hold on.
Oh, so I thought the second was, are you ready?
It is.
Oh, okay.
But I need to reiterate it, no more discussing. So Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve a 1.0 FTE educational interpreter at the middle school. Is there any discussion, Mr. DePolt?
Got it, all right. Just like I said, I'm totally fine with this and I have no objections, I think it's a great idea, but educational interpreter isn't the sign language or?
The description.
Okay, got it, okay. I was, I read that, I just was, I just wanted to better understand, so that was my question to answer.
An educational interpreter is the state's description of that position, is that correct?
That's what I was going to say. There's a deaf and hard-earring teacher, and then there's an educational interpreter. So this interpreter would be looking for that.
Okay. Go ahead. So just the timetable, are we hiring, we're hiring as a FTE, so permanently, did the student just come into the district? And are we going to, if this student leaves, do you want to do next year?
Yep, so the student is new to us this year. She was at the Wisconsin School for the Deaf prior to that, and they are immersed with interpreters, so she had a different system for accessing her classes, and so they did a little evaluation to see whether or not an interpreter would give her better access, and that's why we are here now.
And the second part of your question there was around what happens down the road. This student isn't a senior, so we anticipate the student will continue with us, and that service will be in place as long as the IEP team determines that the service is needed. And so it could continue throughout their career, but it wouldn't necessarily continue throughout their career. And did Dave's point, 100% supportive, just a lot of clarification?
How difficult do you think it's going to be to fill the role, and how are we filling it now? I just have a curiosity.
We do not have the role now.
I know, I know, but how we fill the services? Did you just determine that the services are needed as?
Yeah, we just hired a some to do the evaluation piece of it, to see if there is better access. And so we would have to post a hire and then hope for the best and see what we.
We would have a person start as soon as they're hired, and we bring their hire to the board through the staffing report. Any other questions? Then our motion on the floor is to approve a 1.0 FTE educational interpreter at the Milton Middle School. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Good luck, Chris, go find them.
Next up is discussion of possible action on the 2024-25 teacher contract template. In instances where teachers resign from their positions at the school district after the contract year starts, the HR team issues a liquidated damages letter to the departing staff member. Occasionally, reminders are necessary to prompt payment of these fees. The highlighted contractual language serves to clarify the process by which these funds will be deducted from the teacher's final paychecks should they fail to submit payment directly to the district. It also is important to note that this language was developed with the district's legal counsel, Shayna Lewis, and shared with the Milton Education Association. And you'll see that language is highlighted. It states unless paid or arrangement for payment and fall is made in some other manner prior to the last two weeks of employment, teacher expressly authorizes the board to deduct set amount from teacher's final paychecks.
Rick, did the NEA have any pushback on the, the damage issues?
I don't know, Chris. They, when I was talking with the board president, they did not. A few months ago, they asked about the clarity behind it too. And so then we looked into it, and then in our conversations with Shayna, we decided to add this line, which would hopefully provide more clarity and make sure that they're given options to, when they break their letter or break their contract, they're providing payment, and if no arrangement is set up, we're taking those loans from payroll. But then their signature on a year constitutes a, allows payroll to withhold that amount.
Couple of questions, is there an out for unavoidable exits? You know, if someone gets in a near fatal car accident and just simply won't be able perform their duties anymore, those types of things. Unless I didn't see that escape clause, for lack of a better term, outlined in here, but I assume it's still there in some fashion?
It is, right before that highlighted line, there's a little bit of a sentence in there.
With discretion?
Yes, correct.
Go ahead.
And so then it would be working with HR, superintendent, and the board then.
Then one other question, anywhere that ever worked, when, and I've never had an employment contract, but in discussions like this, it's always outlining the complete value of your compensation rather than just simply your base salary. And so how much is being paid on your behalf for health insurance or into pension, retirement plan, and all these other things? And I feel like anyone I've ever spoken to or as a receiver of this information is valuable to see not only what is my base salary, but what is the total value of the compensation I receive? And I think it would be valuable to add that kind of information into these discussions as well, because not everyone remembers, you know, that it costs $17,000 to buy family health coverage, for example, or whatever it is. And I think, and maybe there's specific language to address, but I think outlining some of everyone's compensation rather than just a base salary is a valuable piece of information to share. Is that what I considered?
We've discussed it over the years, since, for the last 17 years. That has been in conversations of previous boards, previous HR committees, and right now, this contract is based off of state statutes, and we have to be able to provide the base wage, and then our supplemental salary and our total salary for staff members, as well as what they're going to be doing, where they're going to be working at, and their FTE. So in our conversations with our district legal counsel, this is what we need to provide. There are other items that we do provide them on payroll checks, they have access to all that information, Dave, in Skyward, that outlines what the district is paying, and given payroll for those that are paid 20 times or 24 times, those summaries are listed in their payroll checks. And so it's looking what the district's responsibility is, what the employees' responsibilities, and it does outline how much those benefits are paid on behalf of the individual.
Another reason that the total compensation isn't highlighted here, addressed in the contract, is the timing. We issue these contracts before we know for sure what insurance costs are going to be. People during open enrollment can choose family or single insurance, HRA or HSA, and all, and some of those decisions come after the issuance of the contract. So as Chris shared, we still track that, the total compensation, people have access to it in their paychecks, but it's not built into the, to the contracts, because your point is a really valid one about, the district makes a significant contribution to our, financial contribution to our employees beyond salary.
And that's reflected in our conversations in the HR committee through the spreadsheets that you were seeing earlier this year, in the graphs that we showed tonight. All that is reflective of what the district contributes to health insurance and any of our benefits.
Yeah, follow up on what you said. I've seen it, but I've seen it more from a recruiting and a retention perspective to show the staff what they're, what they're being compensated for. So when someone just thinks that they're getting, you know, $15 an hour, well, no, it's, but I haven't seen it in a contract way. I've seen it more of a HR tool to try to retain employees, like, hey, you can go somewhere else, but, so it's a great point, but I understand what you're saying about the contract. I do have a question about, and again, this is just in my history, that I've never been able to withhold from an employee's paycheck without telling them the paycheck, it's going, like, the date, like, without them signing it at the point in time, like, here's the form, this is what's coming out, this is the date. So Wisconsin law does allow that to happen with just this, so this contract was signed a year ago, and now it's being withheld, like, that holds up under Wisconsin payroll and labor laws?
And that's exactly why we wanted to talk with our district legal counsel, because that was my exact question, how do we get that right now? Somebody's leaving, what's the incentive of me signing off on that to have it withheld from my payroll check? So we want to make sure that we're being flexible with the employee, but then also making sure that we are able to withhold that amount from the payroll checks. And in our conversation with Shayna, she did say that based off of that signature, when a contract is signed, that will hold up if there is pushback.
And because it's assigned annually, they're not old and outdated, so it should be, it should help to hold up if, if questions are challenged.
Exactly. And then your salary amount on the first page changes, as well as the board can be changing that broken service fee too. So.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2024-25 teacher contract template as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Dave to amend our teacher contracts along the discussion we just had. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And thank you, Rick. All right, we'll roll on to new business. A on new business is called School District of Milton Community Focus Groups for Long-Term Financial Planning. Rich is going to go over for us a proposal of sorts for a collaborative effort between administration and the board to help engage our folks in the community and educate, enlighten, and help understand some of the hurdles we've got and some of our long-range financial considerations. We've, we've shared with the board, and then started with the finance committee, but then to the full board, some project, financial projections for coming years, and that's something that Ross and our business services department and I work on, on an annual basis. We always kind of keep an eye on what those short-term and long-term projections are. And we've had conversations about how with changes in funding from the state for this current year, we feel that we're in a good position for next year, but then we'll begin running a deficit the following year, and then the year after that, we know that our $2.5 million non-recurring operating referendum will expire. So we want to make sure that we are engaging community members, whether it's staff members, parents, business leaders in the community, or taxpayers in the community. We're engaging them in conversation about what those short and long-term financial situation looks like, both for our district and for the state of Wisconsin, because public schools across the state are dealing with the same situation. You've probably seen news coverage of a number of area school districts that are bringing operating referendums to the voters this April. And part of our conversation is going to be with our projections, especially once that $2.5 million non-recurring referendum expires, we'll have to make some difficult choices about if we do want to go to the local taxpayers for, to cover that loss that we'll be having, or if we want to have a balanced budget through budget reductions. But it's something that, before the board makes a decision on that, it's important to have engagement with the community. So we're looking at scheduling a series of focus groups for long-term financial planning, starting in late May and early June to take place. We haven't talked about dates yet, we wanted to just share the topic with the school board first, but you can see from the, from the memo or from the document there, really in that community focus group charge, it talks about that, community focus group serving an important role as an advisory to the school board and administration. They did not only explore school finance topics here at the local level, but also at the state level, look at trends and projections, and provide input on potential solutions to address long-term financial challenges. And then on the second page of that, Carly, if you want to flip to the next page, it's important to have a well-represented community. So I talked earlier about parent guardians from our different schools, business leaders, representatives from our local municipalities, community members, school board, staff, and administrators all be part of that group, that we would reach out to community members who are interested in taking part in that, but these also would be open meetings for anyone in the community that wants to attend. And again, we're looking at May and June as the timeline for getting that process rolling. Questions or thoughts from board members?
Rich, I think it's, it's an excellent idea. I think just looking at folks who had an opportunity to sit in these meetings and just talk about budgetary things over the years, enlightening for, for those folks, and that's, it's one of these items that's rather complex and fitted in a, it's difficult, right, as far as what's going on. Thank you for coming, a community group that you and I attended recently, and kind of just had the same type of discussion of kind of where things are at. And I think regardless of what people stand on the issue, the opportunity just to kind of get a deep dive into how does this all work? You know, what are the challenges facing districts, and how does this all work, and what does the future look like? It's very valuable, and so I think having a more formalized opportunity for community folks who've come in and learned something, former opinions based on information is very valuable, so I think this is a great idea. I think the timeline for it is a great idea, and just kind of listening to Rich and even Ross's presentation on the matter has been, has been great as well. So I think getting, getting from as many people as possible is going to be, again, one of the best tools we have in the box, I guess.
You're spot on, but it's a, it's a complex topic, school funding and financial projections at the state level and, and even at the local level, there's a lot of moving parts to it. Sometimes people compare it to a household budget, and there are some similarities, but there also are some very significant differences between a school district's budget and a, someone's home budget at their home. Dave referred to the presentation, Ross put together a presentation, and we shared it with, we're invited to a Ford Jamesville meeting. A large part of our school district is, is in the city of Jamesville, many businesses that are in our school district take part in Ford Jamesville, so we had an opportunity to share with them some, some of that information, and also the noon rotary, which is made up of members of both the Jamesville community and the Milton community, had invited us to, to share some information with them too. and the Milton community, had invited us to, to share some information with them too. The, the information was very well received, and I think that led to some really good discussion on, on the topic.
Is this written for like a press release? Or is this just for, and it's just the way, right, I was just curious then, how you're gonna post that out?
It wouldn't be something that we'd put out right now as a press release, it's something that, as we get closer and have more information about the specific dates, then we'd get that out to make sure we post it on our website, and also share it with the local media.
And do you know if any of the local, I noticed if some were going out, I guess for April would be the referendums, are there any that are close in our area that are doing some, something like this, just out of curiosity?
Doing the referendum or focus group?
The referendums, because they're in April, so obviously the voters are better pleased.
There are several local.
Yeah, there are a number of districts in, in our surrounding area, and across Rock County, and south and central Wisconsin, that are bringing operating referendum questions to their voters this April, and then there are some others that are considering it at least for this coming November. If our district or others make a decision to, to bring an operating referendum question to the voters in November, a decision would be made, need to be made by the board by mid August.
No, I mean, I love the way, I like, really liked the way it's written, I was just curious if they had done anything like this, do you know of anybody else that was already bringing any vote, and I would have thought they went.
I believe Swinzel had a focus group, and I think I just ran out of questions, anything like that, so I believe that was, I'm not 100% certain of that.
I think they surveyed their district as well.
And in past years, we have, we've had community listening sessions that are open to the public, but one of the things that we found is that there isn't always great attendance at those, if you just say, show up at, at the high school, for example, if you want some information about this, or even when we went out to different areas around our school district, we feel like we can maybe get better bang for your buck, if you will, or better outcome from the time that we put in by working with focus groups, at least to start. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't also do community listening sessions, because I think those have value, but they don't, they at least haven't from our standpoint, and from what I've heard from other districts, something that's kind of similar, that people are less likely to attend those than, than they used to be.
Well, yeah, if they feel they're a part of the, if they feel they're a part, then it gives them a lot more sense of pride and ownership, so, you know, it's much more than, I, again, I went to those listening sessions the last time, and when I went to, my three people there, so I agree with you, Jen had a very, oh, thank you, so, thank you.
Rich, I think it's a great idea, all 100% supportive. Is it, can you share yet, or maybe it's premature, about how the selection of disresonance is gonna work? Now, Trace, can I ask if we can put on a publication, or how are we, how are we gonna identify those players in the game?
We'll get out information to let everyone know, part of that will be, if you're interested in being part of the focus group, get back to us, and we'll have a way for them to, to reach out, but it also will be reaching out to board members to see if you have people in the community that you think are, are important to have appetited, and it doesn't, it doesn't need to be people that are the strongest supporters of our school district, it's really folks who have an interest in this topic, and, and feel like they would, and they feel like they would be valuable parts of the, of the.
You mean, there's any kind of like cap with some other people, or, maybe also we had too many? That'd be great.
Yeah, I, I think we have to be, be thoughtful about, if you want to have a session where people are digging in and, and working, you can't have 500 people added, for example. I think you've put this kind of, it's gonna be great.
Rich, do you have an idea, or when will you have an idea, the dates, so we can start to get those invites out, and people can start to play in?
I think I wanted to kind of make sure the, the board saw value in kind of the, the plan here, and then we'll be working with, with Joe on some possible dates. One of the things that's worked well, I'm making, can run it by people right now, and it's not an action item, but people can provide feedback. I know typically, we have our board meetings on Monday nights, and if we did a Monday between board meetings, Monday nights sometimes are nights that board members have available because it's our regular board meeting night, so one of the things that I'm thinking is mirroring our regular board meeting day of the week and time, but, but on the off day when we don't have a board meeting.
I also, I think it bears mention that we would wanna set up at least another night during the week, such that we could engage folks that would have a Monday conflict beyond our, because that's really the audience that we want, and if we found out folks had a Monday commitment and said, gosh, I can't come on Mondays, we would certainly have, have some option there for a, a different night of the week that would be available. So like Rich said, not an action item, but more information to come, but basically we're rolling out a plan of sorts to, probably wanna get folks involved and, and share some information. All right, any other questions on that? If not, I will roll on, I'll invite Mr. Bill Horn to the podium, and he'll give us an annual look at, I guess it becomes annual, because I've seen this a number of times, we have a couple of college, college-type options for our students, early college credit program and Start College Now.
It's actually semi-annual, so I'm bringing you the, the summer request and the fall, what would be the fall semester for the colleges and the technical colleges, and then I bring this again in October for the spring request as well. So tonight and before you, you have the early college credit program, which is with the UW system, students machine meet for apartments to take courses through UW, and the Start College House, the Wisconsin Technical College System, again, those students meeting requirements set forth in state statutes, those are for you tonight and before. Once again, students have to meet those requirements, courses that they've already taken here and extending those options. I will say that this number continues to strike, in part, just because the option that we continue to have for the high schools, so, this is, I think, the lowest amount everyone has at this point in the year. The fall is usually higher for the spring, but this is probably the ones that I had sometime, right before today, but most of that is student options, because that's what we have at high school.
Can you elaborate a little bit on that for me? Is it that we don't have the teachers, the money?
No, no, because we offer more students, because we are offering more options, fewer going to the technical college, going through this option, because you have to extend, extend it, a lot of the courses that we have at the high school, again, this is, students are going, we pay the college tuition for these classes, so that there are restrictions that they have to get or meet, because of more options that we're having, we're finding fewer students are taking this option because they're taking the courses at high school.
Sorry, I, I, you're leading, I was looking at like the first one, the general chemistry, that one, so that's five college credits?
That is a five college credit, and students are taking that at the seventh, so five college credits.
So is that just, they had met all the, everything that they have here? Okay.
So is it safe to say that, that students can be a senior next year?
That is correct.
So it's a good thing that there's more options or things?
There is, that is, that's correct, so then, you know, this is a good opportunity for students, the state statute is designed for schools that, that they don't have it in high school, that they can take it for other needs, but, so it is.
This is a great program, I have my daughter who was able to get college credit out of this program, and it just really sent way nice into the college environment, and actually I was at the other platform, so it's changey or what, but anyway, anybody who has any interest in any, any of these courses should definitely do this, the value is immense, even if they wish to retake it in college, so be it, be it an idea that you're getting a college of obstruction here, it's, it's phenomenal, and certainly, Rachel, when is there?
And this is a count of students, it's not like student, three, four, and five are the same student?
You're correct, there are six different students who are choosing to enroll in, this is not Black, actually, Black, Destinations, that's the school that's up in Kewa, a heavy equipment operating school, and then five students this next fall at O'Clare, Madison, Royall. Are there any other questions?
I just, one question, so, O'Clare, so they have to go to O'Clare to take?
So these are through online courses?
Online courses, okay, that makes more sense, thank you.
Any other questions?
They're embedded in the class tape.
Yeah, right. It's a heck of a community. All right, thank you, Mr. Bill Horn. All right, that pushes us down to miscellaneous, A is our staffing report, which is included in board docs for anyone that's.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Dave to approve our staffing report, are there any questions on it? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Staffing report is approved, and first to read, following is action on gifts and donations.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second. Thank you, that was Tracy's motion, we'll give John the second on that, to approve our gifts and donations, and as always, with the gratitude of our district. Questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That also clearly passes. Meeting dates, Mr. Donovan?
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, April 8th. If you recall, we only have one board meeting in March, so the second Monday in April is April 8th, 6:30 PM here at the district office. Tomorrow, there is a candidate forum for school board candidates, that is held here at district office in, in the PDC, that starts at 6:30 PM tomorrow, that's for people who are interested in attending, it's not something that's a requirement for board members or expected, but board members who are interested in attending that are welcome to, and because there may be a forum, Carly posts that as a potential forum. We have a benefits advisory group meeting on Wednesday of this week, March 13th, that's at 4:15 here in the PDC, again, that's, that's the benefits advisory group, Rick is the board's rep with the benefits advisory group, and we have an HR committee meeting the following Wednesday on March 20th at 11 AM in the first floor conference room. And that is it for scheduled committee meetings right now.
All right, questions on any of the dates that Rich just went over? If not, I have exhausted my agenda.
I move Richard.
Second.
Rick and Dave get that, all in favor, thanks for coming, we are adjourned.